August 11th, the Jackson County Commission meeting to order an overall talk.
This is one, Mr. Goody, present. Two, Mr. Benvold, present. Three, Mr. Miller, present. Four, Mr. Ledman, present.
We call Ms. President so we can conduct business as soon as we have a notification by Mr. Porter and our friend, Mr. Goody.
God in heaven, we're blessed to be here today. Thank you so much for the chance to come together to discuss the business of the county and the citizens of this wonderful county, God. We thank you for that. Thank you for the men that are here to make decisions about the county. God, we always pray for the men and women in armed services. We know that there are many that are in harm's way right now, so God, we pray you'll be with them and be with their families. But there's trouble all over the world, God. We pray that you will protect those that are in the conflicts and, God, for the civilians especially, we pray that you will end those conflicts if it be your will. Continue to watch over the members of this commission and the citizens of this county, watch overs and guide us and direct us every day. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They've set up an approval of minutes from our previous meeting and minutes from the July 28th meeting. Would you have a motion to approve those minutes? Motion to approve. All those in favor say aye. Any further say no. We have presentations tonight. Do we have anyone to start that?
Motion.
So we move on, and I guess I need, we need to approve the agenda also. We have nine items on new business for our meeting agenda and five items for discussion on the work session to follow. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Motion in a second.
Aye.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The votes say no. There's no old business, so we'll move on to new business. And the first item is regarding the Veterans Memorial Park, Mr. George Jones.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, my name is George Jones, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the three veterans organizations in Jackson County, American Legion Post 30, BFW Post 6073, and BFW Post 10564 at Operation North Jackson or Stevenson. And I'd like to apologize, I put the word out this past week, you know, that we're going to be making this presentation. I asked just the officers to attend thinking that this was going to be in the small room downstairs. We could have filled the room if I would have known that we were going to be in the courtroom. So I would like to, at this time, introduce our commanders that we have present today. We have Commander, BFW Post 6073, Raymond Brandon, and we have about to be Commander Berniano for American Legion Post 30. And we have some of our members present, other officers of the post. The purpose of our presentation today is to provide you, our Jackson County Commissioners, with an overview of our vision and our desire to develop and construct a veterans memorial park on veterans' own property adjacent to the veterans home in Scottsboro that all Jackson County will be proud of. Our goal is for the county commissioner, our county commission, to support this project, work with us on this project, and to be presented on a steering committee for planning, organizing, and implementation of this project. Before I start, I'd like to, oh, I've already done that part, background. You may have read in the newspapers or heard from others that our veterans have been approved by the United States Army to take possession of an Army tank. Before transporting the tank, we had to complete the concrete slab that will support the weight of the tank. I am happy to report that the slab is not complete. It was completed this past week. The location of the tank will be on that veterans' own property. If you're looking at the veterans' home, it's that field to the right. The slab is currently about 150 feet to the right of the building and 75 feet back from the street, and that's where the tank is going to go. The Army is now processing our paperwork to transfer the title of the tank to us. We had to complete the slab before they would process the title, just like a car, we have to have a title to this tank. And then after receiving the title, it's going to take about two weeks, we believe, we will be cleared to transport the tank from its current location, which is in Anniston, Alabama, to Scottsboro. Meteor Express, a local trucking company, has agreed to transport the tank for us, and they will start coordinating the move once we let them know that we have the title. This effort to acquire the tank has stirred the desire within our community for a veterans' memorial park for all of Jackson County. Jackson County currently does not have such a park. Several of our veterans started visiting veterans' memorial parks in other counties and states. So far, the veterans have visited parks in Dunlop, Tennessee, Marion County, Tennessee, Pricsville, Alabama, Huntsville, Alabama, and several others. I think most of us here today, more than likely, have visited or toured a veterans' memorial park at some point in time. We were impressed with the static displays, the tanks, the planes, helicopters, armored personnel carriers, cannons, jeeps, et cetera, that we were able to see located on these, within these parks. We were more impressed with the various park layouts, memorials, the memory brick walkways, the statues, the park setting. We were even more impressed with the tranquil atmosphere that these parks presented, where visitors could reflect, honor, and pay tribute to their local community, military men and women that have sacrificed and served their country. We are all here today because we think it is time for a veterans' memorial park in Jackson County. Our veterans have already taken the first step to make this part a reality. We have our first static display, the Army tank coming to Jackson County. We have also initiated raising funds through donations to assist with the costs of transporting the tank and initiating plans to start the development of the park. Reaction from the community has been extremely positive. I would like to request that the county commission consider a budget line item for this project. We believe the next step in our vision is to initiate the development of a veterans' memorial park for Jackson County is the organizing of a steering committee for moving this project forward. We would like a steering committee that is representative of our veterans organizations, the BFW, American Legion, but we want the city government, the county government, and possibly other entities whose presence on this committee would be valuable in fulfilling the vision of making this project a reality. The veterans will work with interested partners in this undertaking to develop the makeup of the steering committee. The steering committee will make the decisions on the need to incorporate and file for tax exempt status for the purpose of furthering this vision. The committee or corporation will be in charge of making decisions on all aspects of the project, to include but not limited to, if incorporated, the makeup of the corporation, developing plans and making decisions on the layout and content of the park, taking charge of the fundraising and expenses of the project, applying for available grant money, scheduling the development of the project, selecting the contractors for the vagrants, raises of the project, et cetera, many other things that I don't, I can't foresee at this point. It would take people a little bit more experience to figure out all the details of what's going to need to be done. Following a similar presentation to the Scottsboro City Council this past week, the council showed a strong interest in this project, and the mayor indicated he would provide us with two names of city representatives to participate on the steering committee. We would like for the Jackson County Commission to join with us, provide representation on this steering committee, and work with us to further the development of the Jackson County Park for veterans, veterans memorial. At this time, I'd like to answer any questions or any comments that you might have.
Where were these pictures taken, George?
Some of those were taken in Dunlop. Well, that one there, that tank, that was taken in Anniston, Alabama. That is the tank.
Okay.
That's the tank that's coming. Now, the other pictures were taken, some were taken in Marion County Park, Dunlop, Pricsville, and also, we have a few there from the Huntsville. Now, the Huntsville, they didn't have any static displays, but it's a beautiful memorial park. The others, they had, there was a jet, there was a plane, there was a tank, armored personnel carriers, a jeep, a UE helicopter. And our goal is, we're going to start applying for other static displays immediately, and we're hoping that we can get on the list for a UE helicopter. That's my goal. I was a helicopter, UE helicopter pilot in Vietnam. I'd like to say to you.
Any questions, Governor?
Will we be transferring the memorials that were on the courthouse grounds to this park?
No, we haven't, no thoughts or, we don't know if that would be appropriate. I think that those are decisions that the steering committee should address, and hopefully we'll have the county commission represented on that committee with the city and with some of our veterans and other people that we feel, that the committee feels should be valuable to have on the committee. We're coming to you and the city because we, the veterans, we don't have the skills, we don't have the know-how that you have. You and the city have been involved in developing, you know, these, what do you call them, the park that you have out there, the industrial parks, sorry for angry, these industrial parks. You put things together, you were able to form a plan, you were able to make the contest, make everything happen in order to develop that, and other things within the community. We don't have those skills, we're relying on your help. And plus, you would be in the decision process of what we should be doing.
George, what'd you tell them when we called?
Well, we really don't know how much it's going to cost. We're taking a shot at maybe $500,000 to $750,000. But until the steering committee gets organized and they start putting out bids, what the first thing would be to have an architect, maybe a competition, and people to submit a plan, what would we want the park to look like. I've drawn up, oh, and that little packet I gave you, I did draw up my own little sketch. It's not, it's not close to, it's not professional or anything like that. I just threw together a sketch of a hypothetical plan used in our property. Now, we've got about five or six acres out there, and that's all debatable on how much of that property, you know, it's up for discussion, how much of that property we would need, you know, in order to develop a park. But we need a steering committee to move forward at this point. We can get the tank here, we can get the tank set up, but then at that point, we need some help moving beyond that.
Which veterans organizations did you say were involved?
We have two BFW posts, BFW Post 6073 in Scottsboro, BFW Post 10564 in North Jackson. They don't have a post home. They meet at the park in Stevenson. I've been to several of their meetings, but they support this, and their post commander went with us when we went to Dunlop and to Marion County, and he's very excited about it, and he said they wanted to be part of this. And those are the only three veterans organizations in the county.
Any other questions or comments? I think, I think it's a great thing, well, I think there'd be any opposition to definitely supporting and finding how, you know, if we need a couple of votes, we come up with a couple of names to sit on the committee and support that also. We talked a little bit, and I'd like to be involved a little bit myself. I think it's a great thing for Jackson County and something we need to show pride in.
And we'll be providing the property, that's a cost right there that's been eliminated.
Do you already take donations for this?
We've already started donations. In fact, that little packet I've got, each of you should get a copy of, on top is a letter that we're currently using, I typed it up on July 7th, and we have been passing this around to some of the businesses in town and also, you know, to other people asking for donations, giving them a little background of where we want to go. And we've currently received, I think, about $2,000 so far.
I run a business in Scottsboro, Jackson County, and I've pledged to become a Silver member, and I challenge other businesses in Jackson County to do the same.
I thank you, I thank you very much. Yeah, that's one of our more interesting parts, I think, that most of our businesses that we've talked to are interested in. It's on the back page of that cover letter, it's got on there, special donors memorial. We saw this at every park we went to, and they had big, you know, like granite memorials, and Huntsville was more impressive, I mean, they had huge ones, and they all had the same, the same levels for donations. The memorial will be displayed at the park, listing the name or the company name of the following generous donors. 5,000 and above is platinum, gold is 2,000, silver is 1,000, and bronze is 500. So I think a lot of people are going to be very interested in having their name or their company name, you know, on the monument there at the memorial. Also, right now, our quarter master, Ron back there, he's been taking in the donations that we, that were taken in. He has opened another checking account, it's BFW. We'd like to have it, you know, the steering committee take those funds over, and, but they're in a separate checking account right now, but it's a BFW checking account. And we wanted to separate it from our other funds so we're not going to need them. And he's also keeping track, like, if somebody donated $100 this week, and then next week they give us another hundred, he's keeping track of it. So if somebody hits the $500 mark, automatically, they would be a bronze. And if at a later time they gave us some more money, they could move up so that when we have the memorial, you know, they may have worked their way up into a silver or
We appreciate it very much, and we'll work with you and help you out.
Okay, if you just let me know who those two people will be, we'll find a mutual time that's agreeable so that we can kick off, you know, the first meeting of the steering committee. And the first thing that they're going to have to do is figure out where they want to go from there, what they will be to figure out what the next steps will be.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it, guys.
The next few items are regarding some of the process of, I think, for County Road 895 and 675, so Mr. Wyler.
We'll start out with County Road 8, which is item two. I've mentioned y'all previously, this project actually bid July 25th, and Aldot's took, got all the paperwork handled with them, and what this motion is, it's not actually, y'all are not approving awarding bid, but what y'all will be doing is concurring in the award of the bid of the low bidder by Aldot, and that low bidder being Jackson paving. And the total funds is $1,574,200. That's got some indirect costs and everything added in with actual bid. County funds due is going to be $314,840. And I think y'all have all got a copy of that, we emailed it in.
Questions or comments on this? This is, we talked about this last week, we didn't have the paperwork at that time, I don't believe.
No, we didn't, I've got them all this time. That is an aid trip project, I'm sure.
So these dollars will come from that loan that was taken for aid. So any discussion? And as noted, we'll need a motion to concur with the bid on this.
I'll move.
Motion in a second.
Aye.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, and opposed say no. And next item regarding County Road 95.
Add one more thing to item two, and Mr. Ledman mentioned it last week, I don't think, I didn't see it in the newspaper, but this is paved from the top of the mountain on County Road 8 to County Road 17, so it's not down in the wood, we had to stop it at the mountaintop, you know, federal requirements. Actually, I called this this past week. Okay, item number three is, now, this is not an aid trip project, this is our annual federal aid project that we do. This is County Road 95, and again, this is the same as County Road 8, it's already been bid, and what the commission will be doing is concurring in the award to the low bidder by Aldot. And again, the low bidder on this project was Jackson paving. Total bid was $1,147,731.52. County funds due is $229,546.30.
Questions or comments on this item? Motion to approve? Or motion to concur? All right, do we have a second? Any discussion on this? And similarly, these funds will be taken from that loan that was placed for these projects. Motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, and opposed say no. Next item regarding County Road 67 and 5.
I won't break them down into two.
You had information on that one?
I'm sorry.
Did you have information affecting what's on that?
Yeah, I got it, 10 minutes before it has come up here. So I'll have to make copies and get them, but I'll just try to go through and get any questions about it. What this is, this, now, these two projects, both of them are aid trip projects, they're both scheduled to bid August the 29th, and what we're doing in this initial agreement, I'll be coming back to y'all after it's bid or something similar to what we just bid. Prior to the bid, we have to agree with a, concur with Aldot as far as where the funds is coming from for these projects. And County Road, County Road 67, we've got a total project cost, and this is estimated, now, this is not actual, like this other was, is $791,500, and the county funds that's going to be required is approximately $158,300. And what the commission is doing here, if you chose, so choose, is you're voting to approve these numbers with Aldot, that you will participate in 20% of the cost. Do you want to do, Mr. Chairman, you want to do both in the same group?
Go ahead and give us information if I don't know what you did.
County Road 5 is the same situation as County Road 67, it is an aid trip project. The only difference is, of course, the cost, the total on County Road 5 estimated is $349,340. County funds required will be $69,868.
These, now, this is, again, approval, if this comes back up to that amount, or is this, these are nothing big.
You're agreeing to the 20%, or if what, whether it's lower, the most regret of 20% as far as financing costs.
And these have been bid, or have been?
No, these will be bid August the 29th.
So we'll also have to concur with the bid.
Yes, that's correct.
All right, discussion, questions, comments?
What did Madison County tell you about their portion of capital?
We, I made a test contact, I'm going to have to get a call back. I don't know what, I don't know what their plan is, but I did talk with Derek about it, he said he'd seen work in a fair, there's some folks in the area, I don't know what their plan is.
The last information I had, I don't know if they were going to pursue a hundred per cent.
Were our stops at the county land, I mean, we don't go any further anyways.
No, we stopped.
Any further discussion, questions? Okay, we'll entertain a motion then to amend our 20%, of course, we will have to concur with the bids also if they never see. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Motion in a second, and for both of these?
Both.
Okay, motion in a second. All those in favor say aye, and opposed say no. Next item, motion to approve Jackson County Park master plan contract, you have your packets. We discussed this last week, and I emailed this out over the last week, as mentioned. This is a copy of the proposal to put together a master plan for the park. There's a question on the reimbursables, and there's an opt to exceed amount of $1,000. She claims, or doesn't believe it'll reach near that point, but wanted to leave enough cushion, and that's for printing costs also, so there'll be maps and other things that we get from this process, which I think will probably be the biggest cost of this. So before we proceed, are there any questions or comments on this item?
I kind of feel like the overall cost is a little high.
It'd be up, the maximum would be 87.60.
Just from what I can see here.
And Mr. General, maybe I'll tell a little bit more of the, you met with us on that thing.
Yeah, actually, I was surprised to come out, I was expecting to hear a little bit more of the scope of work, we were expecting to hear more, yeah, I suppose, but quite good of Brownwood and stuff they're doing, figuring, measuring, and, you know, had some of the things done, basically, heck, much again.
I think the biggest part, as you see here, is the design, obviously, is the biggest thing. We want a plan that will give us a full design that we can work with if we want to schedule it over five years or 10 years or whatever timeframe we want to work with. And then also, the cost is to give us estimated cost of that, so a lot of that work that normally we would do with an architect in the first place will be done through this process. I think we get, I think we're getting pretty good to improve about here, of course, we can work with anyone once that's put together.
The way I understand this, read it, they were actually render the drawings, I don't know, the whole design.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion on how to proceed?
Motion to proceed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, and opposed say no. Okay. Next item, motion to approve advertising for the upcoming vacant positions in the appropriate office. As discussed last week, and you should have had a copy of it in your packets, as discussed last week at the work session, the appropriate judge has requested that we advertise for the positions in that department. We have one vacancy that he would like to fill, he will pay those costs, and then the possibility of two more vacancies that will arrive out of this, arise of this retirement incentive. So he would like to go to head and advertise and go through the hiring process and have those two names prepared when we're ready. I think December 1st will probably be when the other two positions are filled, when those move forward. So before you have in your packets the grade and definition of discussion of what the, that position, those positions will entail, so any questions or comments before we proceed? I think it'll be up to three, I think it's, well, right now, we're looking at definitely two, but up to three positions that will be filled by December, one of which will staff immediately and paid for through the separate funds. The other two will not be hired until December 4th, if the commission did, did that later. Questions or comments on that? Do we have a motion to advertise for those positions? Motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, and opposed say no. Next item is regarding the repaving of County Road 250 and High Top.
I think this was brought before the commission last week at the work session at High Top, and this road is approximately one mile long, seven tenths of it is real, I guess you thought it's severe shape, Commissioner Venn, one of them's been there. What we'd like to do is, if the commission approves, including this in this year's paving, we want to apply up that seven tenths of road, we'll put down a three-layered tar gravel, and in the remaining three tenths that gets you up to Highway 79, we'll just put a one-layered tar gravel, just to kind of seal coat it, because it's in pretty good shape. Estimated cost of this, this is just, you know, materials and the contract labor to put it down, don't include any county labor equipment and things, is about, about $40,000.
And there was, discussed with Mr. Wyler at the paving of County Road 255, I would like to mention more quickly, we are working with TBA to get that. We are working with TBA to get that road paved. There, I think there's a portion that's not included in that agreement. And what would be the cost, did you say, to finish up that portion of two fifty-five?
About sixty-five thousand, yes.
I'd like to consider that, see if we can move forward with that, what the possibilities of that would be. But we'll open that up for discussion. For, so two fifty, County Road two fifty in amount of how much again?
About forty thousand.
Forty thousand. And then County Road two fifty-five in the amount of sixty thousand. And that would be to finish a portion TBA did not commit to. They, I think they have roughly four thousand feet that they were paving.
Four thousand, sixty feet. Their, I'll add, their cost, I figured, you know, the design, everything they're going to do, they're putting in about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what their cost is going to be on the part of their paving.
Do they turn off that road where they're stopping their repairman? Or can you on the road they want us to?
Yeah, I told the chairman, I've been trying to figure out where they got the four thousand, sixty feet number at. But we went up and done some measuring, and there is a turnoff that goes over. There are high wires that they've got, and that's where the four thousand, sixty feet would stop at, from the intersection of two fifty-six and two fifty-five, that's where it started. To get, and that, that amount now, Mr. Chairman, to get down, which was about sixty-five thousand, to get them down to the, that would get you down to the second drive of the, where they have the reenactment at. It wouldn't go all the way on down, that would get you about the second drive.
Which is just a little, very small section after that, right? So we'll need a motion, I guess, discussion as far as where to, to pay for this out of, I would say, one sixteen would probably be the best source of these funds. Okay, so for these roads, either together or separately, do we have a motion on how to proceed?
Like a motion on County Road two fifty.
Motion to proceed with it? Second, do we have any further discussion on that one? And all those in favor say aye, as opposed say no. Regarding two fifty-five, what, what are we thinking of that? I think there may be a possibility to get the TBA to rearrange it to get the entire road paved, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. And when was the timeframe as far as when they wanted to start it?
A week from today.
Actual paving starting a week from today?
That's their plan, that's correct. The TBA's actually handling the paving through, through a separate contractor. They're not working it through us, they're actually handling. There'll be, you know, a lot of times we'll pay for it, they'll reimburse, but they're paying the contractor directly.
This motion's going to be along this amount that we're going to pay, or they doing it, we're paying them back, or is that our contractor coming in?
Their contractor and our contractor just happens to be the same, same one. So if we determine to do it, we're going to, our contractor will pick up while they're still there and go ahead and complete it.
I make a motion, we approve this, contingent upon TBA not continuing on the road. We need to try to get them to pay for the whole thing, because that was the whole deal, so we discussed it with them. But I don't want to hold it up either.
Do we have a motion, or a second? Further discussion?
You bring one sixteen out of this one, I'll throw one one.
That would say one sixteen. It would be, need to be one hundred or one sixteen. If you do that out of either one. Which one do you want to pull that from?
What do we say?
If you leave it open, we could look at the finance. What the? That's out of one sixteen, isn't it, capital improvement? And for clarification, one sixteen is capital improvement, and one hundred is actually Public Works gas tax. And there is some money there that could pay from five of these projects.
Do we have an annual paving timeframe, Mr. Gopman?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so have a motion, a second, and I have spoken to the TBA, and I'll get back with them this week to kind of push for Mr. Wyler to come up with a plan to get them to extend it. So hopefully, we can get them to do that. Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, as opposed say no. Next item, motion to approve temporary workers for the Public Works Department. We've had, we have two positions, one that was vacated, one that was not taken, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Now, of these temporary employees at Public Works. So he has listed a name of two individuals that he'd like to submit, and two alternates, in case those other two individuals cannot do, or choose not to fulfill the role, or choose to take the job. So we'll need a motion to approve these two individuals and these two alternates in case either of them. Ultimately, we'll have a total payment, correct?
Correct.
So any discussion, questions on this? I think we discussed this last week also at our work session. Do we have a motion to approve the names as presented? Motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, as opposed say no. Next item is regarding approval of leave without pay. And you have a letter from the sheriff in your packet. Employee with the sheriff's office has adopted the FMLA, and the sheriff has approved leave without pay effective immediately. And that says, continue to leave upon the concurrence of the commission. This individual, I don't know if you can tell anymore about the individual.
He's, he's been on medical leave for several, several weeks, possibly several months. And he went to jail.
So we've got the letter, and again, you approved this from the sheriff.
Yes.
So we'll need to concur with this, or we can move forward. Do we have a motion to approve this item?
I make a motion.
Motion and a second? You know how, what the length of time is? So this is an additional nine days?
Sheriff, was he hurt off site?
No, he, he has some medical conditions that, I guess, he's had all his life. It's developed into something pretty major, I think. He's, he's been out for some time. We haven't been paying him a salary, he's used up all his, his time. And, but the commission has been paying his insurance based on the family medical leave act. But now he will have to pay his own insurance.
I think if you have any questions, Mr. Willis can kind of explain, I guess, the details of the situation on it.
Mr. Porter, there's nothing that causes keeping paying his insurance, can you help him say?
This, this actually, by doing this, we're following our policy a hundred percent right out. We, we have the opportunity to offer this additional amount of days, but with the process of, so. Have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye, as opposed say no. Right, we're not, during the meeting, I guess, we'll continue on if our work session is appropriate, Mr. Porter. We'll move on into our work session, no award presentation, no problems for citizens. We'll go into our discussion items, and the first item, which is already a resolution from the attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kind of commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present this resolution to you, in hopes that you will pass the resolution. As the other legislative bodies of Jackson County have, all the way from Bridgeport down to Woodville. And, and the communities therein have gone on and worked to pass this resolution. And to me, it's long overdue, and if you bear with me, I'd like to go ahead and read the resolution. I hope you have it in your package. Is that right, Matthew?
Yes.
Great. Resolution, Jackson County, Alabama, Lake Gunnersville, largemouth bass fishing capital of the world. Whereas, Lake Gunnersville, the largest lake in Alabama, located in Jackson and Marshall Counties, is a sixty-nine thousand, one hundred acre reservoir with nine hundred and forty-nine miles of shoreline. And whereas the lake, completed by TBA in nineteen thirty-nine, flows from Nickajack Dam in Tennessee, through Jackson County, to the Gunnersville Dam in Marshall County, Alabama. And whereas largemouth bass fishing continues to grow and expand in popularity with all anglers in America, and now has become a competitive sport with high schools and colleges throughout the country. And whereas the lake's credibility has been established and confirmed by numerous biologists using information such as krill count, which is data from actual anglers on the water success from the previous year, electrofishing data, which is a sampling method that uses electrical currents to stun fish so they can be netted, examined, and released, tournament data, state records, interviews with local guides and bait and tackle owners, and their own fishing experiences. And whereas Jackson County has numerous public access areas, state parks, city or county parks, state wildlife centers, camping resorts and campgrounds, marinas, boat ramps, and commercial recreation areas that are available to facilitate boating, fishing, picnics, and other outdoor and water activities. And whereas the success of Lake Gunnersville in Jackson County has resulted from the growth and management of two primary types of aquatic vegetation that flourish throughout the lake, Eurasian milfoil and hydrilla, which anglers like, bass like, and the small, and the small fish and crawfish that the bass dine on like. And whereas the effective partnership, and effective partnership has formed between TBA, Jackson County, and public and private organizations who manage the invasive plants, and to create and maintain a symbiotic relationship between plants, fish, and people for the purpose of improving and sustaining the Lake Gunnersville bass fishery. And whereas nationally known fishing websites and the Alabama Bass Trail consistently recognize Lake Gunnersville as the number one bass waters in North America, and especially Alabama. And whereas Lake Gunnersville in Jackson County is consistently promoted as a destination for world-class largemouth bass fishing, and boosts the economy of the Jackson County area. Now therefore be it resolved that the Jackson County Commission hereby adopts this resolution to declare Jackson County, Alabama, Lake Gunnersville, as largemouth bass fishing capital of the world.
This is a resolution that is put together and requests that we pass it and designate it. So, and has the city done so as well?
They had, already done a good work session, they will vote on it the next official session.
No questions or comments about this? Appreciate it, thank you very much. If there's no objection, then we can throw this on to next week, or next meeting.
Appreciate that.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Next item regarding Public Works emergency rates. This is something that had been discussed in the past, and I guess we want to determine how we wish to proceed. Currently, in cases of emergency, tornadoes or other disasters that happen around the county, the Public Works does charge a rate for the work that we do. And we've talked about working with the communities around us to charge a rate that would help them out a little bit more. So I wanted to discuss this a little bit, and talk to Mr. Porter about how this would need to be done, if we would need to declare these situations as items of public, of public interest, of public need, or if we would be able to have a rate schedule in cases of emergencies like that. Of course, we would not work for private citizens, it would be for the towns, cities themselves that call upon us.
Sure, you would have to determine it to be a matter of public interest.
Again, it's something we've discussed, and I think probably the best way to pursue this would be to have the committee come up with a chart or a rating scale, depending on whether we do it by the, I guess it would be done by the hour. But how we need to charge for the, for those items. Questions or comments on that? I guess what we'd like to do is just get the committee, if you could, to take a look at it, get us this together, and reflect that, and go from that point. Anything else on that? Okay, next item is regarding a document, proposal. This is, Mr. Ben, you may be able to explain this a little bit better than me. I've, we've looked at several different possibilities of providing software that would allow us to put a lot of our information on a server as opposed to having it on paper just stored on one computer currently, such as the meeting minutes, agendas, different things like that, where we're trying to search back, or even in some cases, our payroll processes, that we keep paper copies of. A lot of things we may still have to keep some paper copies of, but having a solution like what you've got presented here would allow us to put that online and allow for us to easily find items that we were looking for. Example would be if we're looking to see when a particular thing passed a county commission meeting, we would be able to do that if it were all stored on the server. And the proposal that you have would allow us to do that in multiple areas. The focus would be on personnel and on our general county commission items to begin with, and hopefully, we would expand it over time. I wanted to present this to you tonight for everybody to take a look at and see what questions or comments were in place, and then see how, maybe not move on it immediately, but get this out there to see if there would be a possibility of doing this at some other position. Questions or comments, or do you have anything to add to that, Mr. Ben?
I'd like to mention, this was kind of the initial stage, just to, to start off with the mission office. See how that goes from that point forward, but. There would be a yearly support fee, which he's got another one here also, at thirty-six oh three per year.
Questions or comments on this?
The thirty-six oh three a year, does that, is that any type of warranty, or is that just simply a maintenance agreement to help maintain their equipment, or what?
That's essentially the software, keeping the licenses on the software. And then, of course, if we upgrade, we can allow us to keep our software up to date though.
So that will actually become an annual expense, right? That's what you, what you guys are going to do?
Right. The, the benefit of this, and the reason I'm not pushing right now to move forward with that, did want to get it out there. I think we did something we need to move to at some point in time. The benefit is, of course, as we go through this retirement incentive, and we are not replacing a lot of positions, I think this has the opportunity to help us in the long run as far as being able to do more with the employees that we have. So I think there's a big benefit in this. We're, we're not as digital, I guess, as we need to be. And this, this is going to help us as far as researching information, and providing that information quickly, not just ourselves, but the citizens in the county that are looking for help. So I think it is something we need to look at and be, be looking at. And of course, like I said, any ideas or comments on it? Any other questions or comments? If you would, again, keep this on your minds, and there's a little more research I want to do before we bring it to the decision. Next item is regarding the placement of historical documents at the courthouse, Mr. Gopman?
The three documents that I'm referring to would be the Declaration of Independence, Ten Commandments, and Constitution of the United States of America. These historical documents are what shaped our great nation. Each of these documents represents the very foundation of this country. If we removed only one of these documents, we would see a totally different country. We have gotten away from what this country was founded on. If we want to return our country back to what made her great, we must start at the level of that. It's time for the majority to make us stand on what made this country great. And I'd like to commission to focus on a meeting to vote to post these documents on the courthouse ground.
Is this something that, in this court, maybe, as far as posting it in the hallways, I'm guessing we wouldn't have any problem with the Historical Association? But if we're posting this outside of the meeting, questions or things we have to work with the Historical Association?
I don't think so.
Mr. Gopman, you want to feel like brass runs lights, or?
Yeah, I'm going to try to get prices on different, different ways.
Yeah, I'm going to try to get prices on different, different ways of, considering which bigger.
Do you want to do granite statue price also or just plaques?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to have to refer for it for designs and we'll see what's, what's the most cost effective and, you know, a little test for it.
Any other questions or comments? But I guess if, if you'd like to place this on the next one, we have those prices ready for me. If there's an objection, then we'll place that on the agenda for our next meeting. Next item regarding retired one-time increase as asked by the state. Mr. Maney, if you want to just tell what this is about.
You've all got a copy of the letter. They're, they're basically just telling us that eighty-seven retirees currently in the county and that the way they calculate this one-time bonus is a minimum of three hundred dollars for a certain amount per year of service. And total cost would be forty-seven thousand three ten, the Jackson County would, would have to fund.
And the way I understand this, there are two ways, I suppose, two ways. We can pay for this upfront if we were to go with this, or it could be stationed out over a period of years, is that correct? Or like that?
It can be, it can be paid by the market into the fund.
Right.
It doesn't have to be paid at one time.
If, if we were to move forward with this, I would suggest we not do that for two reasons. One, it's going to increase our annual budget, which, of course, improved with this as a one-time would increase this next year's budget. But it would increase the annual budget over this period and, of course, we'd have to, to make all those changes in the payroll system, which is another thing, especially if the funds are there to do it. But what are the, any other questions or comments?
Is there any fund, to say this is retired employees? General fund will have to absorb it.
My concern with it obviously is, well, two concerns. My first concern is, of course, the situation we are in financially. And I know this is, you know, we, we, I appreciate definitely what our county employees do and what the previous county employees have done, but we're making, we are in the process of a lot of cuts. So, so I have a concern with trying to do something like this. Of course, the other part of that is these raises apparently can only be given with the state's approval. So I'm not sure, Mr. Porter, if later on, once we did get out of this financial situation, would we be able to get a local law passed that would allow us to give an increase to our retirees?
I can't say for certain. My first impression is no, because it's, the state statute describes this, that you can't adopt a local act that is contrary to a state act, but I don't know that for sure. I'd be glad to look at it and if you decide that wants to do that.
Well, if you research it anyway.
Well, my personal stance on this, the ones that have contacted me have not had an increase since two thousand and eight, that's six years. Our county employees have received raises during that. So I'm personally going to, I'd like to sit on the agenda because I, I'm going to explore whatever we have to do to fund it. That's, that's what we need to do.
Now, I'll make the point, just to share the point, that the retirees have not received an official raise, that is correct. However, the cost of insurance has gone up and while not all the retirees participate in that, that is an incredibly expensive cost to the county every year that we provide. And that's, you know, that's, that's a bonus. I don't know that many companies or even many counties provide this pay for that retirees' insurance. Again, we, I think we have thirteen, do you remember the number, or is it higher than that?
Thirty-seven.
That are on insurance.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, okay, out of that eighty-seven. So I know that's not the whole group, but the cost of insurance continues to go up and we do pay that increase every year. And I think we're trying to understand those numbers a little bit better still. But that noted, you know, that is an additional cost to us every year. That is in some senses an increase to their budget every year that we aren't providing already. I'd, I'd want, I feel like we should share that.
If I understand this correctly, the state done this for state employees and then since the county employees and the district minister's county employees follow the same umbrella as their, it goes back to the county or the particular municipality, but please.
The state passage or anyone that wants to participate can, it is under the state retirement system. And we are responsible for the cost, which is something I don't fully understand, being from the retirees association, we don't pay that retirement check, but we would be responsible for the one-time increase.
But it is not reoccurring. Make sure people understand it's not raising the retirement allowance. It's a one-time bonus, you pay it one time, that's it. Make sure that's not miscommunicated.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, it's been requested to be placed on the next meeting, James, and that'll be on the twenty-fifth, I believe. If there's no objection, then we'll place it on that date.
Could Mr. Maney please give us some numbers on our insurance company?
Yeah, we've got...
In the past six years.
He's trying to get that together. We've got estimate, but we will get that.
I've got a call in now and getting some more, like three years from like five years ago, and we should get that soon.
And also let us make sure that we understand, would these employees anticipating having insurance coverage after they retired when they hired on? You know, is that part of their package? You know, some folks come to the county system, don't pay the greatest in the world and expect these benefits as they get older, correct? And, and I mean, I would like to make sure that that's something I understand.
What about, I mean, is, when you retire, do you get a cost, is the cost of living guaranteed? The, the only cost of living, again, would be through...
Through state insurance.
Through state. And I'm not sure, you know, if that's something that's normal across states or normal across, you know, whatever else. But that's something, I guess, from time to time, the state government has done. I think, was it two thousand and six? Is that what you said was the last time the rate was?
The state wants to mandate, looks like they can pay for it.
Well, yes, actually, the state passes it, but they're not putting the burden on the retired, or, or say, which I guess is the group that is responsible.
Unfunded mandates are becoming normal too. You up hand noted the equation, the figure, the years of service and what, what would be our maximum recipient and who?
I don't know if the maximum recipient would be, the average is five hundred and fifty dollars per person based on this. That noted some of these individuals would be under three hundred, but technically the minimum is three hundred. So they're only going to get three hundred dollars. Some of these folks who have, you know, if someone had thirty years of service, you know, you have to calculate that. I think it is, is it two dollars per year of service or some?
Two dollars per month.
Two dollars per month of service is what calculates. So if you're under that amount, under the three hundred, you will get at least three hundred. And then, of course, you know, if you were here thirty years and you would get whatever that came out to you for two dollars per month of service.
So somebody with thirty years or more.
Any other questions or comments? And, and you guys suppose would have some of this.
Hey, if you don't mind, would you also just put the years of service about these retirees?
Yeah, she, she has that list. I'm not sure if she does or not, but I'll check to see. I know we, we, this is those receiving the insurance, but I'm sure she'll take care of that, but I'll check to see. Any other questions or comments? Okay, again, if there's no objection, we'll place that on the agenda next, or the twenty-fifth. Move on to our reports. Mr. Maney, Mr. Whitey?
I have one thing, happened to think of this while Mr. Parsons was speaking about the bass fishing and I think the chairman has filled a few calls about the Mud Creek boat ramp. So I thought I'd kind of let everybody know. Department of Conservation is in Montgomery is over that boat ramp and they've got a pipe that's coming loose in their driveway going down to it. And they have, they have closed this boat launch until further notice. What I want, I had a call this morning on my phone, I'm a messenger. He called me on the weekend, told me that it was planned, I'm trying to work on it, start working on it this week. They declared a state of emergency with it some way so it could get, wouldn't have to go through mid-process. So hopefully they'll be starting back on it. This is one thing, I think the chairman's had a lot of calls on it, I know I have, and wanted to kind of let, maybe the media could put out, you know, it's something the commission has no, nothing really to do with, it's just a, it's something that they, they chose to do and we did, they asked us to borrow a couple of barricades and we provided some barricades for them and they, they put it in place and things. But the message this morning was it's starting with this week sometime, so hopefully they will.
Mr. Porter?
I'm here.
Mr. Miller?
No, sir.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yeah, one time, County Road ninety, ninety-three. We've had some issues with loggers, just clear cutting in that area and some of the road is, we've had some trouble with, so I guess Phil needs to explain what all we've done. Well, we kind of talked about it.
County Road ninety-three is a road that goes down the mountain in the Bryant area. We had, started getting a couple of calls last week of loggers in the area and they've apparently caused a lot of destruction. I've not been able to get there yet. I did send a man to look at today. They've, they've had trees let across the road, they've had logs letting the road. The, we got a call today that because of all this work, apparently the rain occurred this weekend, we've got some shoulders that started sliding off. It's about, he said estimated seventy-five to a hundred foot shoulder slid and it's about a ten-foot drop-off about that far off the edge of the pavement. So I, my sign guy today, I sent him, I had him to, he left office as I was leaving to come up here. He's going up to try to assess the situation and possibly put up barricades if it's, if it's as dangerous as the call we got just about an hour or so back and possibly put up some cones and stuff that, to help to, to, you know, so if it is a danger. I don't know, I hadn't been, had to talk to him. Of course, there's no phone service in Bryant, so I'm going to try to get him as soon as I get out of here and see what's going on with it. But apparently the loggers have destroyed our road and the shoulders and the roadway adjacent to it, so.
I'm on a, I'm away, I'm away, I will go back and check you back.
I know Mr. Guthrie, I called Mr. Guthrie, was it Friday or Saturday? I got a call and I called you and he went, he went and checked on it and I talked with Carl Rocky last week on Thursday, was it? I think when we first got the call and he actually sent a deputy up to see if we could stop this problem. He talked to somebody, but apparently it's got, got worse. I don't know if they tried to stop, you know, do better, but, but it has got, the road apparently this weekend has slid.
Do we post those roads for a layman?
Can we post roads?
Do we?
Do we? That road is not posted for a layman, no, no.
Might, might want to consider, you know, if it's turning roads up.
Yeah, ain't so much the, the weight of the trucks, Commissioner, it's the work they're doing on the side, it's the roads, the trees falling in the road and clear cutting, I mean, they have, they have completely tucked down every bit of greenery that's in the area according to Mr. Guthrie and that man I said, it just caused some erosion issues.
They was scared, they was dragging logs, they were dragging them up next to the road and it was just watering out right next to the highway and in this rain and no, no trees there, the dirt and more solutions go. And I don't know how more color, but I don't know for the way it's, what happens in that situation.
I've seen a couple of pictures, it's pretty bad. I mean, you're, you're talking thousands and thousands of dollars of destruction, you know, the roadway. And maybe Mr. Porter could discuss our, you know, what we can do. I, I know I've been involved in a couple of lawsuits before that and we always won, but, all right, Mr. Porter?
We can, if we can get together.
Sure.
Take a look at it.
Once we know what the damage really is, I think it'd be appropriate to do that.
Mr. Benwick?
No, sir.
Mr. Laidlin?
No, sir.
All right, that concludes our meeting and our work session tonight. We won't have a budget meeting this afternoon. We will be out of town next week for our ACCA conference and we will have our final meeting of the month on the twenty-fifth, along with the budget meeting to follow that. And we do have, again, I think it was announced last week, we do have budget meetings on Thursday from April four thirty. Those will be departmental budget meetings, so anyone's welcome to those as well. So entertain a motion to adjourn?
Mm.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.